Good evening and thank you for joining us for our August 7th regular school board meeting. At this time, please rise if you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. It is my pleasure to call this meeting to order. The school board, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda today. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as outlined?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Motion by Bianca and a second by Art. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a seven zero vote. We have no recognition by the school board today, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for superintendent's recognition.
Wonderful. Thank you. Congratulations to our former Lightning Dance Team head coach Jenny Raish, who was named the National Coach of the Year by the National High School Athletic Coaches Association. A few of her career highlights include 20 state championships, 16 state runner-up finishes, 35 section championships, and 20 straight conference championships. Congrats to Coach Raish on this incredible honor. And I'd like to congratulate the Eagan High School Wildcats for their 72 to 71 victory over the Eagan Police Department last month. This is the third annual Cats versus Cops football game, which supports Open Door Pantry, a food assistance program that supports low-income individuals and families in Dakota County. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. All right. We have no special communications requests today, which brings us to our consent agenda. We have 10 items on the consent agenda tonight. We have minutes of the July 24th, 2023 special school board meeting, minutes of the July 24th, 2023 regular school board meeting, gifts, grants, summary of claims for June 2023, bond proceed, investment services, employment agreement personnel, agreement with the YMC of the North for 2023-24 School Age Care Program, and joint powers agreement between the Dakota County and District 196 for the provision of school resource officer services. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like to remove today? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Suchin and a second by Joel. All those in favor of approval of consent, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent is approved on a seven zero vote. All right, we are now in our reports section of the meeting. I would like to welcome Ms. Janet Fimmon to the podium to introduce us to a summer of fun and learning in District 196.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, and members of the board. I am Janet Fimmon, Director of Special Education here in the district. Happy to be here with my colleagues to highlight and share some of our innovative summer programming happening this year across the district. As you know, the school year does not end in June. We are constantly planning for opportunities to support our students. I am excited to share the work that has been happening throughout the summer to educating, developing, and inspire students for lifelong success. Over the past few years, we have had the opportunity to expand our programs due to ESER funds, and we will highlight some of those in our presentation tonight. Operations Leadership Team are not able to be here with us this evening. Therefore, I will share how their work enhances our ability to teach students. We would not be able to provide the high-quality instruction without transportation, the multiple drivers and miles of routes to safely transport our students to their summer programs. Then, technology, supporting thousands of iPads connected to a network with a bandwidth of eight gigabytes to keep a smooth flow of instruction. And finally, nutrition services, providing the fuel for great performance. The operations departments create conditions to provide excellent opportunities for students. Tonight, I will focus on nutrition services, and this will provide a snapshot to you of the work they do. On behalf of our Nutritious Services Team, I'm thrilled to share with you the exciting developments in our Nutrition Services Department regarding the expansion of the summer feeding program for children age 18 and younger. As part of our commitment to the well-being of our community's children, we have added programs across the district. In addition to our school sites, we have established a strong partnership with the Open Door, allowing us to produce six meals for six community sites. These nutritious meals are prepared by dedicated staff at Falcon Ridge Middle School and then delivered to neighborhood sites, ensuring children have access to healthy food when they are unable to get to school, to a school, to get the food. In line with nutrition services dedication to promoting local and sustainable practices, we have taken strides to support Minnesota farmers by purchasing The Good Acre, a reputable food hub that aggregates and distributes fresh produce from small emerging farms. This summer, we proudly featured local carrots, cucumbers, tomatoes, and several of our summer programs. This provides nutritious foods and promotes a connection between our students and the food they consume. Looking into the school year, we are actively engaging in discussions with Minnesota farmers to further expand our farm-to-school initiatives. So cool. Nutrition Services knows these efforts enhance the well-being of our students and the whole community. We continue to strive to make a positive impact and to make the students stay better. We appreciate the innovation of our technology, transportation, and nutrition services in order to ensure our students' basic needs are met so they can engage in high levels of learning. We will now hear from some coordinators about additional programs across the district.
Good evening. I'm Barb St. Abin, Program Manager with Community Education, and thrilled to be here to share information about community ed activities, serving our district's youngest all the way through our most senior veteran adult learners. Nearly every program in our area of community ed saw an increase in participation this summer. Community ed held over 1,800 classes and activities for all ages, birth through older adults. Our district pools were full to the brim with kids and adults learning to swim and Red Cross swim lessons, as well as our competitive swimming and diving programs. Trained instructors also provided certification instructions, instruction rather, to 70 teens and young adults, many of who went on to become employed as swim instructors and lifeguards. And nearly 12,000 other district students cultivated their athletic, art, and academic skills in ever-growing, engaging community education classes and sports camps. Participants in Project Explore were busy learning and socializing at dances and bowling leagues and more, while our district buildings, stadiums, courts, and fields were buzzing with community use. Additionally, adult basic education and adult English learners were busy in class, as well as under-21 diploma students, 18 of those students graduating with their high school diploma, and three others earning their GED this summer. I'd like to highlight some of the programming having an impact on our very youngest District 196 learners, their early childhood family education program. First off, 85 families, a third of which were new to the program, were able to learn together in classes designed for children ages birth through two along with their parents. Specific topics were also attended, were also well-attended, as were family playtimes, offering families a time to gather to explore the wonders of math, science, art, movement, and dramatic play, all while building strong relationships. Like other program areas, ECFE is experiencing growth and enrollment, back to a number closer to pre-pandemic, and we had waiting lists for some of our ECFE classes this summer. Along with family programming, a full-day Summer Connections Pre-K program was offered for children that had limited access to previous preschool connections, preschool, or would benefit from an extended day prior to entering kindergarten this fall. The program was held alongside our Elementary Camp Propel program in order to share the cost of transportation, food, and nutrition, and nursing services. This opportunity focused on preparing our very youngest learners to be welcomed to our K-12 community through fun and engaging learning activities with the goal of creating familiarity and a smooth transition to kindergarten. It's truly been a great summer of learning, supporting the district's mission of lifelong success from the youngest to our oldest learners.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Bartash, and I serve as the Elementary Targeted Services Coordinator. Our district proudly serves our elementary school programs in the following areas: Summer Library, Summer Accelerate, Back to Nature, and Camp Propel. Tonight, I would like to highlight Camp Propel, which has a focus on propelling students into the upcoming school year. Our program was offered from July 24th through August 10th to rising first through fifth graders who qualified for targeted services. This year, over 2,200 students registered for Camp Propel, an increase from 2,050 last summer. All elementary schools were paired in order to provide consistent programming, and Camp Propel was hosted at nine of our 19 elementary schools. Students engaged in the arts, physical education, literacy, math, and social emotional development lessons. Also, services for multilingual learners, hands-on science experiences, such as studying fish structures as seen on the last slide, and field studies at Lebanon Hills as seen in this slide, were integrated in the program. ESER funding provided decreased class sizes, additional support via licensed and non-licensed staff, cultural family advocates, social workers, all of which created opportunities to develop positive relationships within the summer school settings. We look forward to our students bridging summer learning into the next school year. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to middle school.
Good evening. My name is Brad Schaefer, and I serve as a secondary targeted services coordinator, and I'm also an assistant principal at Rosemont Middle School. This evening, I would like to highlight our district's middle school Summer Academy program. All six middle schools in our district host Summer Academy programs, and the students attend their home middle school for this learning. Summer Academy began on June 20th and is a 15-day, four-hour-per-day summer program for the incoming sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. The enrollment for the grades six through eight this year was just over 900 students. Enrollment, more families continue to take advantage of our middle-level programs. This summer, our summer of 2023 was about 16% higher than that of 2022. The program continues to be a great opportunity for all of our new students as they transition to middle school, and we take a lot of pride in our sixth graders moving to the next level to the middle school. In fact, our incoming sixth graders' students make up about 60% of our Summer Academy enrollment. We are especially grateful to have our ESY, our special ed-supported students, in our buildings as well as part of this program, and it makes for a really smooth transition to the next school year. While the Summer Academy is in the academic focus is literacy and math, we feel that the summer experience brings much more for our students. This transition from elementary to middle school can be challenging, so we find great value in having our incoming sixth graders join us in the middle school to get acquainted with staff, the school building, build community for the upcoming school year. We have incorporated other areas in learning besides literacy and math, thanks to some additional funds, the ESER funds. We have incorporated art, tech ed, physical education, and even swimming, and the kids love to jump in the pool in the summer. The slide up here shows our students building a wood jewelry box with our tech ed teacher that we employed on staff this summer. Students also get a chance to open a locker, maybe for the first time, and that is a highlight. Additionally, our middle school summer programs have also provided students with the opportunity for community service. The slide, the picture up on the right side, has our students serving and volunteering at Feed My Starving Children this summer. In the other photo, the Rosemont Police and Fire Departments hosted a picnic, grilled hot dogs, served lunches, and connected with our students on the last day of Summer Academy in July. Also, in our summer program over the past two years, thanks to this additional funding, we have added social-emotional learning to our program. Middle schools have been especially grateful to include a school counselor on staff in the summer, and this school counselor has been an actual counselor from within the building that is with us in the summer. The school counselors worked, are working directly with students and supporting the social-emotional learning at Summer Academy. Additionally, counselors run a program entitled Empower You. We've incorporated this program in the summer school the last two years. With this program, students participate in daily student-centered lessons personalized to each student's goals through a one-to-one asynchronous support with accredited coach from Empower You. The 30-minute daily lesson sets out to equip our middle school students with resilience, increase self-regulation and confidence, and improve their focus and mental health skills. And we're thankful for that funding that has helped us to move these students forward this summer in their social-emotional learning as well. So I thank you for the opportunity to share the highlights and accomplishments of our middle school Summer Academy students. Thank you.
Hello, I am Jody Hanson, and I am an assistant principal at Eastview High School, and I am grateful for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and highlight some of the summer learning opportunities that have been taking place at our district high schools. From athletic and arts camps that started the first Monday of summer and will continue through this next week, to students participating in credit recovery courses, freshman academy, honors, acceleration, enrichment opportunities, and independent summer learning, our high schools have been busy and full this morning, or this summer. I can honestly say that our high school buildings truly never rest. Students of all ages come to our high schools for specialized arts and athletic camps all summer long. Some examples include our Hit the Lights Theater camps, tennis, football, volleyball, and basketball camps, marching band, debate and mock trial camps, and Summer Super Group, where students work on strength and speed development with our training house trainers and our high school coaches. In our classrooms, we had 868 high school students participate in credit recovery courses at our four comprehensive high schools. There are honors and acceleration opportunities for students to prepare for rigorous high school course opportunities. These enrichment opportunities take place both at our schools and at home, while students are doing independent summer learning at home. We also had 316 incoming freshmen participate in our freshman academy programs at our four high schools, preparing them for the transition from middle school to high school. Tonight, I'd like to share with you a little more about the Jump Start program at Eastview High School. This is one of our freshman academy programs, and each of our high schools offer a similar targeted specialized opportunity for incoming freshmen to acclimate to high school. We focus on literacy, numeracy, and study skills as we engage students in academic activities that keep them learning and grow their skills. Jump Start includes daily guest speakers. We have teachers, counselors, student support staff, athletic and activities directors. We also include student panels of upper-class students, campus tours, and a whole lot of fun. We put an emphasis on making connections, connections with staff members, connections with peers, and connections with the learning community. In the words of one of our freshman participants, "To be honest, I was not thrilled to be doing school in July, but after the first day, I was glad my parents signed me up." Another student shared, "Even though schoolwork in July was not my favorite, I feel more confident about the building layout, meeting friends, and my ability to do the work." We are so thankful for our teachers and staff who provide these opportunities. We're thankful to our families who share their kids with us during the summer months, and we are especially thankful for our students whose energy and enthusiasm fill our buildings all summer long.
Good evening. I am Andrea Engstrom. I am the Special Education Coordinator here at Dakota Ridge School. Tonight, I get to share with you a little bit of what has been going on throughout the district in special education for summer programming to meet the needs of our students who qualify for extended school year services. We've served all ages, including 65 early childhood students, 360 elementary students, and 250 secondary students. Additionally, 65 students attended Dakota Ridge in two separate sessions to accommodate the construction going on out front, and I'd like to, we had 65 additional students at Transition Plus. I'd like to take a minute to highlight 24 of those students who participated in a new opportunity for incoming 12th graders. Whoops. All right. So new this year, Transition Plus offered 12th graders making the transition from high school to Transition Plus a unique ESY experience. This experience included four days at Transition Plus as a community of learners coming together. Days were filled with team building, exploring Transition Plus, their schedule, building relationships with peers and staff, students, and families, and at the end, students and families felt this was a huge success and will be a continued practice for our 12th graders moving on to Transition Plus. Additionally, tonight, I'd like to highlight a few of the additional summer opportunities for students throughout the district, such as summer classes and field trips led by our American Indian Education Program. The AIE Summer Cultural Enrichment Program's objective is to strengthen student engagement and promote positive and culturally relevant learning opportunities among the district's indigenous student population. The goal is to enhance students' academic achievement by providing robust learning programming focused on mathematics and art, as well as culture, community building, and social emotional well-being. Students participating in the Newcomers Academy earned credits in English, Science, Math, and Social Studies with multiple field experiences connected to program content. We also offered a variety of programs for multilingual learners. The Connections Program is an opportunity to engage with multilingual students and families to build relationships and language skills. Students from kindergarten through 12th grade participate in this program.
Okay, thank you. I want to just take a minute to honor the coordinators that presented tonight for their leadership. They are the ones on the ground making these programs innovative and engaging for our students. So thank you to our coordinators joining us tonight. And I also want to take a minute to thank the board for their support and open the floor for any questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Jackie?
I know a lot of this is excellent report. It's so fun to see and talking about kids making connections and feeling comfortable in school when there's not the big hubbub. And congratulations, just a wonderful report. I know a lot of these are funded out of ESER funds, and those will be going away or diminishing next year, and I hope we're creative enough that we can find what is being paid for now out of ESER funds, that we can find the money to continue to do those programs, because I can't see one in your report that I would like to lose. So good luck to all of us.
Yeah. I think it's taking a look at feedback, what worked really well, what experiences worked well for kids and families, and really prioritizing and maybe shifting some previous models that maybe didn't have the outcomes intended, and yeah, really learn from what worked well, I would agree.
As a middle school teacher, you can just see how scared middle school kids would have so much more confidence when they're in the building and they know what's going on, and they know the people, and they can see the people, and get to know somebody before that first day when it's like drinking out of the fire hose. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. I think at each level, we kind of, you know, the kindergarten transition days, the middle school academy, Eastview High School, and then Transition Plus also.
Just amazing. Thank you.
Very, very good feedback. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much. As someone who has spent some time in our schools this summer, I can attest to what I heard, that they were busy. They did not sit empty. There was a lot going on every time I stepped in. So thank you and everyone that presented tonight.
Thank you.
All right. We have no old business tonight, which moves us into new business, and I'd like to welcome Jill Coyle to the podium to go over administrative regulation, 507.2 AR, student fees and fines.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I am with you tonight with policy, I should say, Regulation 507.2 AR, student fees and fines. Of course, this is our regulation that details all of the various fees and fines that we charge students and families as permitted by the pupil fee law. Tonight, I have three proposed changes before you. It's a review item. I'll be back in September as an, with an action item. But what I'd like to do is to go through proposed changes to Sections 5, 8, and 12 of your regulation, and we'll go through them one by one. First, with respect to Section 5, this is the section that describes our driver's education fees, and the administration tonight is recommending increasing the driver education fees, this behind-the-wheel fee, from $302 to $325. It's been several years since this fee has been increased, and the district's expenses have been exceeding the revenue gained from the fees for many years. Moving on, Section 8 is the district's graduation ceremony fee. And again, the administration is recommending raising this fee due to the fact that our expenses have exceeded our revenue by quite a bit. The recommendation is to go from a $40 graduation fee to a $50 graduation fee. I'll clarify that none of this fee would be put towards caps, gowns, or diplomas. We're prohibited from charging for those items. Instead, it's intended to defray other types of costs associated with the ceremony, increased staffing, printing, rental fees, and the like. Finally, we have Section 12. This is our Electronic Device Protection Plan. So this is a plan that's available. It's an optional plan available to families to purchase to provide some protection in the event of accidental damage or theft to a device that's provided to our students for educational purposes. This is a fees, slightly different thing what we want to do here. The district is recommending that we eliminate the reduced fee for families that qualify for educational benefits, so there would be no fee should a family who qualifies opt into the protection plan. We would still want them to opt into the plan, but there would be no fee associated with it. So that is what I have for you tonight. If you have questions, let me know. Otherwise, I'll be back in September seeking action.
Excellent. As you said, this will be back before the board to vote on at the September 11th board meeting, but at this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from board members? Suchin?
Hi, Jill. I was intended to reach out to you earlier, so my mistake for bringing up right now, but an answer later on will just work as well. I really appreciated in Section 12 how you talked about for students who qualify for benefits, maybe waiving that fee. And what I intended to reach to you is to say, could that same mindset apply for the first two as well? I mean, I would hate for someone to not go through it because of financial reasons, either getting a driver's education or being able to walk for graduation. So not for right now, but it'll be just good to say, what would be, are we able to maybe look into that same application of 12 that we did on the other two as well, and what would that look like?
Yeah, I appreciate that comment. And what I will say is that inability to pay would never be something that would prohibit a student from participating in graduation ceremonies, or driver's ed for that matter. I believe we do look at few waivers in those cases as well. It's just not as explicit in the regulation, but I appreciate your point.
Excellent. As long as people know about that as an option, I think that ultimately is the outcome. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I actually have a question.
Bianca, go ahead.
So if I understand this correctly, if a student qualifies for educational benefits, we wouldn't assess them the $10 a year, correct?
Correct.
But they have to opt into the program?
They do. And so there's, there's a couple of rationale here. First of all, of course, we want devices in all of, in all of our students' hands and want to find ways for them to come forward to have it be fixed in the event that it fails. We're also in a bit of a spot this year where it's a little bit trickier to know who qualifies for educational benefit. So in some respects, this allows us an opportunity to encourage families to apply in order to get access to the protection plan.
Is forcing, and I don't want to say forcing, but having people apply a barrier for some families?
That's, that's a good question. That's not something that I've heard before. It's difficult to know if they're not coming forward telling us that it's a barrier for them. Again, anecdotally, I've not heard that, but I appreciate the point that perhaps it could be.
Thanks.
Is that all your questions, Bianca?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. Yep.
Perfect. Any other questions? Perfect. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, Jill. We will see you next month.
Thanks so much.
Absolutely. That brings us into our other action items tonight for the agenda. I'd like to welcome Adam Wannenberger out to the podium to discuss our resolution relating to the election of school board members calling the school district general election and appointing election judges.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Krieger. Back before you with another election matter, as you know, we're kind of in the middle of the, the filing period for candidates to file to be on the ballot to run for school board this fall. That runs through next Tuesday, the fifteenth is that period. What I have before you tonight, it's kind of a bit lengthy but pretty standard resolution that addresses a number of procedural tasks that need to get completed when it comes to administering the election. Most importantly, this resolution officially calls or declares that, that we're having this general school board election on November seventh. That's an official action that needs to still be taken, so that is a part of it here. Most of the rest of it is kind of procedural nuts and bolts that, about things that need to be published, notices that need to be posted, ballot preparation, tasks that need to be completed. I won't spend too much time talking about the specifics of those unless there's questions. Another thing that this resolution does is appoint the election judges that will be administering our polling places. I've got a list of the judges that we've already gotten confirmed for the various polling places. There's also a lengthy list of potential substitute election judges who we've been in contact with, who are trained and qualified in the event that we need a replacement, or in the event that we decide closer to the election that maybe we need some additional judges, so those are kind of in here for approval as well. And then the other piece that I did want to touch on briefly, because it's a little bit unique for this election, is the polling places. The district, as you know, has designated combined polling places where voters, you know, we consolidate the precincts, and voters can vote at the combined precinct that we've designated, combined several of the city precincts. This year, the, both the cities of Rosemount and Apple Valley are having special elections this fall, and so what that means is that those cities will be administering elections in their individual precincts. Our school board election will be on their ballots, but the cities are in charge of running their polling places, and they will hold those at the specific polling places for their individual precincts. So, so voters in, in Rosemount and Apple Valley will not use the combined polling places, they'll vote at the individual polling places, so for some of them, that might be a different site than, than what we used in May. The remaining jurisdictions, primarily Eagan, but also the other periphery cities that, that we serve, portions of Burnsville, Lakeville, Inver Grove, Empire Coats, Vermillion, they'll still use the combined precincts, will still, the school district will still operate those and run the administration there. There's a notice of general election that's attached to this resolution that includes a list of all of these precincts specifically, including the individual city ones and the combined ones that we'll be operating, so, so that's kind of what that will look like for the fall here, a little bit different with two of our major cities having elections, but that's what that will look like. Additionally, absentee voting, slightly different as a result of that, and also as a result of the joint powers agreement we've entered into with Dakota County. Dakota County is kind of administering most of the absentee ballot processes for us, so voters can all vote by mail as usual through the absentee ballot process, no reason is needed for that. You can also vote in person absentee, Dakota County will be offering that at the three different sites, most notably for our district, the Apple Valley Western Service Center, you can vote absentee in person there. It's also available at their administration sites in Hastings and West St. Paul if anyone wanted to use those. We, the district, will be offering in-person absentee balloting, absentee voting at the district office. However, because of the city elections, that's, we can't administer that in person at the district office for voters who live in Rosemount and Apple Valley. We can't run, we can't offer the city ballots there, so if those voters show up, we'll have to redirect them to an additional polling place where they can vote absentee. Both the city of Rosemount and the city of Apple Valley also offering in-person absentee voting at their city halls, so there's, there's additional sites there as well that won't be too far down the road if voters need to use those, so. Those county sites, the city sites, and then for non-Apple Valley and Rosemount voters can do the absentee voting in person at the district office still. It's a little confusing to explain unfortunately, but it's kind of the way it is, we, we didn't have much of a choice in that, so. And then the direct balloting, which is the official term for what we often think of as early voting, where during, when you get closer to the election, you can fill out the absentee application, but then insert your ballot directly into the machine. That period by the new legislation has been extended to eighteen days before the election, so that can happen a little bit sooner. The county will be administering that through the, the joint powers agreement at those county sites. That won't be available at the district office. Again, you can still vote in person absentee at the district office, just not through that direct balloting, but that will be available at those county sites if, if anyone wants to use that, so. That is the, the key things that are unique about this election, otherwise. If anyone has any questions, happy to address them, but I recommend approval of this resolution.
Excellent, thank you. This is an action item tonight, so before we move into discussion, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jackie and a second by Joel. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from board members? Art?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, there's a lot of changes happening with voting in the state, and it sounds like it's really complicated, but it's really not. There are a lot of resources out there for people to find out where their polling place is and what the opportunities are for early voting, so don't let that be an excuse not to vote this fall. It's really important. We need you to turn out, we need you to vote, and if you have any questions at all, you know, you can definitely contact the district office or contact the, the county or the city that you live in, and they'll get you pointed in the right direction. Don't, don't think it's too complex to actually cast a ballot, it's not that hard.
Excellent. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, I have a motion by Jackie, second by Joel to approve. All those in favor of approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a seven-zero vote. Thank you. All right, and that brings us to school board member and superintendent updates. Are there any school board members with items they'd like to share? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Krieger.
I hope everyone is having a wonderful summer. This actually is our last board meeting before the start of the school year, so we are gearing up and looking forward to welcoming back our students and staff for another incredible year in District 196. We're excited to live out our mission each day by educating, developing, and inspiring our students for lifelong success, and we look forward to seeing everyone soon.
That brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is going to be Monday, September eleventh. At this time, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Joel and a second by Bianca. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We stand adjourned.